Started, please raise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will call the meeting to order. We have the agenda in front of us. Are there any additions or corrections?
Just that the material for the ICS update was added after the original publication of the meeting.
Hearing nothing else, is there a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
I'll move, Shar seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried. Consent agenda.
Is there any public?
Public input, sorry. That was one. I scrolled down a little too far. Is there anyone here willing, wanting to address the board?
Willing?
Except for you. All right, seeing nothing, we will move on to the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? County employee recognition.
Good morning.
Morning.
For county employee recognition today in human services, we have Roxanne Ullinimi Nelson, social worker is recognized for 25 years of service on October 3rd. Brian Olvis, human services director is recognized for service from January 6, 2020 to October 10, 2025. In parks and recreation, Roger Hensel, parks maintenance worker is recognized for service from April 7th to October 3rd. In the sheriff's department, Christina Sweary, administrative assistant began the full-time position on September 21st. And Acacia Josephson, dispatcher jailer began the full-time position on October 1st.
Thank you. On to highway.
I have one item this morning, very quick. It's a quote to purchase an 84-inch broom that will attach to the tractor that we purchased earlier this year. And then it's housed at the North Shop to go out and sweep roads and sweep debris off of roads when we need. So the low quote for this came in from Bobcat of Fargo and it came in for total $7,951. There were two separate quotes that it came with, one for the control kit and one for the broom. So I would like to move forward and purchase from Bobcat of Fargo with that piece of equipment.
Mr. Ted, I'll make a motion to accept the low quote number one from Bobcat of Fargo.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Tom seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried.
All right, and then just a very quick construction update since we're really winding down now, which is exciting. Casal 1 is our only project still going. They're working on topsoil, finishing up some concrete work. Next Friday is the plan for now to get the final lift of pavement on. And then after, there's some striping, signing and turf work that will need to be done. So probably another two weeks, two and a half weeks on that project. Otherwise, everything else is wrapped up and opened. 4 and 40 turned out good. The bridge is open. It is. It's a really pretty, I don't know, it's a weird word to use for construction, but it turned out really excellent. I think the site distances are a lot better. It's nice having that turn lane now.
I've been avoiding going that way.
Yeah, yeah. And 13 is fully wrapped up now too. That one turned out great. City of Nevis, they had some paving that got wrapped up. So yeah, everything came together this year and now we're solely getting into the preparing for next year, so.
Just, just one comment. I just thought of it. On, did anyone mention to you on 40, west of 4, right where the Blue Lake, there's a drainage that comes out of Blue Lake that culvert seems to have settled quite a bit.
Okay.
So I don't know what's going on there.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Someone could take a look at that.
I think that's where planning in 27 to redo East and West 40.
Okay.
So we'll take a look and see if that maybe needs to get done prior, a year prior.
Pretty good dip now. Never used to be that bad.
Yeah, we can take a look.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and then I did just give you these postcards. We're gonna have a public meeting for Casal 23, which is planned in 2027. Kind of, it'll essentially look like an urban road worth looking at, curb and gutter through that stretch along the lake and then pavement up to, up to the lake axis. So it'll be in Akeley.
That's a tough one for drainage.
Yeah, so that's, more engineering is the consultant on board for that. And they're, they're gonna host the meeting with us and have some information. They have a pretty, pretty solid preliminary planned on already.
So will the county cover all those costs?
Yes.
And the city won't be?
No, it's outside of Akeley city limits. Yeah, yeah.
So it's with the road right along that?
Nope, it's, it's up north and then to the east, kind of the, the cut across road they call it out over to.
Yep.
Yep, and then I'm hoping to get, apply for like State Park Road account money maybe to supplement funding on it, but.
Is that the road that's gravel, partway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's gravel to the, it's Cas County and then it's paved from Cas County line into Walker.
So, yeah, it'll be a big project in a couple of years, but a good one. So that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Human services.
Morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. I've just got a few items on the agenda for today. So the first one I got on there is to appoint Mike Edmunds to as the interim director. The reason for this is it'll give him the meeting minutes and everything he needs to be added to the bank accounts and the other accounts that we have. And so Mike's gonna do a really good job. And this will help him out a lot. So I just asked for approval of that.
Mr. Charles will move.
Shar moves. Is there a second?
Mr. Ted, I'll second.
Thank you, Ted. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right.
The second item we have today is for the approval of a policy or debt resolution policy for Hubbard County. So with the collections that we've had, we've been doing, which Clarice has been just crushing it. Like she's been doing really well. There, there is a need for a debt resolution policy so that some of it can be written off. I mean, we're, we currently still send billings to people that, from the 90s for, you know, like the rehab or, what's the word I'm looking for, Mike? At, yeah. Detox, yeah. So detox stuff. And so with that, again, we just need to, some of that stuff we need to move on, but we need a policy in order to do it, to move on from it and write it off so that we can, because it's a lot of time that's spent doing that as well. So it is, this policy is pretty cookie cutter for, with all the other, with all the other counties. And just with Hubbard County in mind. So I would just ask for the approval of that as well.
So how, how, how far or how hard do you work collections? Do you mean, do you take it all the way to get into judgment sometimes?
Oh, for sure, yeah. I mean, we've, I mean, Clarice has now gotten two houses and sold two houses. She has, I mean, we've gotten vehicles and she's doing a really good job. And she's kind of got the disappointed mom vibe going with her. So people that haven't paid prior are now coming in and paying for, you know, their detox and stuff. But as far as like going to probate, like she is, she's been going to probate a lot and she has been doing a really good job recovering money that is owed back to the county, so.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll also move. There's checks and balances in there.
I'll second.
Shar, thank you, Dave. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried.
And the, the next, the last item I have is the Heartland Express operating agreement for 2026. As you can see, the total operating amount, I have it broke down there with the local share. And it, and again, that comes with the revenues from Fairbox revenues and a contract with the city and contract with DAC. And so we, it is a, we actually come up positive on this one as far as funding goes.
All right.
I'm gonna approve the operating agreement.
Thank you, David. Is there a second?
Mr. Ted, I'll second.
Ted seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried.
And then I, I guess if I can, I'd just like to just talk a little bit about, I know I've had some individual conversations about some of the moves that were made in, in human services and just to maybe explain it and get it on the record too, that it was, you know, a budget-driven moves. And so when I looked at, when the, when you as the board had set the, the initial, the preliminary levy amount, I was given an amount that I was to meet. And so after running through numbers a lot and a different, different scenarios, it just, it was more advantageous to move some individuals from the one unit to, from child protection to adult services based on the revenue that they can, they can draw. And it's not just revenue. I mean, they, we do have, as we've said, we have a need in adult services for more employees. And so it was more fiscally responsible to reallocate those individuals from the child protection unit without, without causing a lot of damage, right? Because it, as you guys know, it's, this is not an easy time for human services. And with a lot of counties making cuts already, pre-planning for 2028, 29, this was a, you know, I guess you'd call it the lesser of two evils. But it also does help Hubbard County residents as well. And so we just moved, we're gonna, we have a phased approach of moving those three individuals over. They, it is just simply what they, what we call a managerial right of assignment of case, caseloads. And they will just be assigned to caseloads in adult services where the revenues are, are there. But in totality of it, because we had spent down our reserve account, as you know, as you guys had tasked us to do to try to save, I had to find a balanced budget in order to do this. And so with this, again, it came out to be actually, I think we're in the positive like $1,400. And so for me, that was, that was the assignment that I was given and that's what I want you to know. And that's what will be in place moving forward. So it's, everything, there will be no catastrophic damage or people that will, in a sense, lose a quality of care. There will be some more added, I will say this, there will be some added stress with all of the employees, right? Because having to do more work with less employees in one unit, I mean, it does put a stressor on it. But it, it also, like I had had a conversation with one of the commissioners that property, if we keep, continue to raise property taxes, that will also add to the caseloads of, of our, of human services. Because if the property taxes get too high, you're going to see people that aren't able to afford to live at home and then they transfer over to us. So I really, as my last, as my last board, I mean, I really task the commissioners of the board to get with the state or get with the other counties and make the state do their job. They, they haven't been doing their job and now they just passed the buck and it's only gonna get worse. And they, it's, you know, they don't listen to anybody. They don't even make decisions that make sense. And that is the biggest problem we have in Minnesota today, really. It's, we can't even get a hold of people at DHS anymore. They, they thought breaking the three, breaking it up into three different departments was better. Alls it created was more bureaucracy and less transparency. And that I have a huge, huge problem with.
Just as a comment, yesterday at Minnesota Rural Counties meeting that we had, there are counties that are cutting personnel and they're cutting services severely to try to make ends meet without having a 10, 12, 13% levy increase to cover those costs that would be anticipated. So I appreciate your work. I'm just afraid that in two years down the road, so to say, that we're just gonna be back adding those positions again to try to backfill the, the need
Yeah.
that that's gonna be there.
Right.
That's something to be concerned about too.
Oh, for sure. And you know, in, 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 in reality, I guess if that comes to that point where, then maybe we would probably be at a better fiscal position of adding of positions. Unfortunately, looking at it, and I'm, as you all know, I'm a very optimistic person. I don't see it coming to adding anybody without increasing the, because if that waiver or if the, the county, you know, that 5% county responsibility comes over, I mean, when we were looking at it this year, it's one, it was 1.6 or 1.4 million roughly. That's only gonna grow because of inflation, et cetera. So I mean, if, if the counties and AMC don't get a handle on DHS and the state and force them to do something, unfortunately, I, I don't see this as being adding any positions either. I, I think it would be another scenario where it's gonna be real tough. It'd be a tough decision on you guys and I don't, I mean, I don't envy you whatsoever.
Trying to make the state do something is next to impossible.
All right, no, I know.
You know, we can, I mean, when they grow by 40%, the burden is gonna be shifted down. I mean, they just, their overhead for admin is just ridiculous. And their, their follow-through on issues is, is severely lacking, like you stated.
Right. And again, I, you know, when I say force them to do, it's, I, I don't know what we can do. I just know that the, the official channels are to work through.
It should be more of a cooperative effort between all of the counties and the state to come to a proper resolution to the issues that are before all of us because it is statewide. And it's gonna be countrywide. And when you, when you think about it in the big picture, the Fed keeps cutting and shifting, the, the state's gonna do the same thing. They're not gonna absorb the cost. They're gonna pass it all along to the counties.
Right.
I echo Steve's comments and thank you for being creative and making the adjustments you need to make because this, this isn't sustainable. And state legislature's gotta figure it out at some point in time. You can't just push it down, down the line. And counties need to do what we're doing. They need to take a stand on it and just say, we're not going to do it this way anymore. And hopefully that'll make some change, but it's the consequences of bad policy decisions made several years ago. We're paying the, paying the piper now.
Yeah, well, thank you. And again, that was, I mean, this is, this is the, luckily for me in my tenure here, this is the hardest decision that I've had to make as far as budget-wise. And so I'm very fortunate in that aspect, but it's not easy. And it's not easy on employees either. Change is hard, as we all know. But I think that, again, with, with the leadership that we have, that the transitions will be made and we'll, we will survive. And, and I hope, again, my eternal optimism is that something breaks and we get a, we catch a break and we can get some, some sort of relief on that and are able to maybe add, you know, again, add some employees so that we can properly serve the community. But, you know, we, I, you know, I was assigned, I was given a job to do and, and, and thank goodness we had this ability to do that to where we could save it, you know, save employees and generate revenue at the same time. So it's, it's not without consequence, I will say that. But it's one of those, like I said, lesser of two evils where you, you have to, you have to find a way to get things done and, and that's just what I was able to do.
I mentioned to our heritage board too, you know, you know, you control what you can control. So that's what you did. You went through a fine-tooth comb trying to make adjustments and make it work with what you have. And that's what we have to do unfortunately because I don't know that the Calvary's coming anytime soon. There may be a few more years of this.
Yeah.
I just don't know if people in the legislature, enough of them anyhow, understand that things gotta change.
Right.
I think they, some of them think it's not that bad. It's kind of what they wanted, I think. So, I don't know, we'll see. But we'll just control what we can control.
Yeah.
And I want to thank you too, Brian, for the years that you did give us. And then to speak to some of the people that have talked to me and emailed me that I shared their same concerns, you know. And just hope that we made the right decision and time will tell. But I do agree with, with David and Steve that it might not get easier in the near future. But as you, I'm always hoping that things will get better. And all we can do is try to do our part. And if this was a mistake, hopefully it's not.
Right.
And if it is a mistake, we'll have to correct it.
Right, yeah.
Thank you for, for serving Hubbard County.
Yeah. And I want to say thank you to all of you for the, the time that I had here. The decision to leave was not easy. It was not an easy one. I wasn't looking. And just for the, you know, for, so you guys know I was, Air Corps Aviation in Bemidji, they, they do restoration of World War II aircraft and different things. And they, they needed somebody to do personnel building and kind of culture type stuff. And so they sought me out. And so that's where I'll be, that's where I'll be heading. And again, it was bittersweet. It was really tough because I do love it here. I, I mean, I've had great relationships with everybody on the board, which is not very common with human services and county commissioners, I'll just be honest. In other counties, I've been very fortunate. But it's been a really great, great tenure. It has. And move on. And as I explained to staff, you know, we'll find out if I did my job right, I hired the right people, it'll be, the same things will happen. It'll be the same no matter what, right? And Mike, again, in my stead, he's, there's a reason why I recruited and went out and got Mike to come down and work, work here. Because he shares a lot of the same vision and characteristics of leadership that I, that I have. And as a leader, you know, you always try to surround yourself with somebody that is, knows, that potentially could replace you and is, knows more than you. And there are things that Mike does know way more than I do and things that he'll do better. And I think that, again, it will be a seamless transition interim-wise and then find out what the long-term plan is from there. But I really do appreciate the time I've had here and I, I definitely will, I will miss it.
Well, Brian, you and I have already talked about and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Brian and I sat in on AMC's Health and Human Services and Alexandria. And I echo what Brian and Dave and Steve have all and Ted have said. I am not optimistic either because even the people that have worked with the legislatures that, that were at the AMC where we tried to draft the language, we had to choose our words carefully because the current policies that are put in place, if we use the wrong word, they wouldn't even look. And cut and delay are two words that they're not interested in hearing right now. And I appreciate the people from Social Services that have to email me. And I share the concerns, but I also share the concerns about the levy. And I am not optimistic that this problem is gonna be fixed in the near future at the state level. And I don't want us to be in the position where the counties are at MRC that are actually cutting staff. And so I am supportive of what you did because you're trying to find the best solution in the climate that we have. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And that is one of the bad things. They're, they're cutting staff and they're cutting services.
Yep.
You know, and they're cutting services that maybe aren't mandatory, but
Right.
there's still services that are available.
Right, and that's, you know.
And it's sad to hear that, that it has to come to that.
Yeah.
But they had to make some tougher choices.
Yeah, and that's why I assured staff too, is that with this decision, we're not cutting any services. It's gonna put more stress on the employees that we have. It really is. But we're not cutting any services. So the community's not gonna lose anything. We'll see more overtime, which is, you know, we know that overtime and higher workloads creates burnout. There might be a little turnover. However, there might not be because there are, we're in a lot better shape than the counties surrounding us have. And again, continuing the, the telework and work from home policy, once I'm gone, is essential. It is essential to that too, because it allows people to, one of the studies I was reading, even talking about telework. And I know in the pub, pub, or private sector, it may not, you know, it hasn't worked out in some things. And in the public sector, it hasn't worked out some. But here specifically, because of the policies and stuff that we have, it allows people, even when they're in a stressful environment or stressful job, if they're in their home and they're, they're not having to travel to work and do those things, they find themselves to be less stressed out and they don't take it as hard. So the burnout isn't as much. And so I just, again, I encourage to continue to keep that regardless of what, what happens because that is what's made retention and recruiting for us huge. I've gotten many emails since I put in my notice that said, "Thank you for allowing this. It is, it has helped our families. It has helped us to be good employees." And, and again, the work's getting done. That's the thing. It's getting done. And the, you know, human services, I will say this, I mean, I, I can't, you know, I, every year, I, for the last few years, I bought Qdoba for Christmas, right? Catered in Qdoba and that was, that was about, you know, the, the best thing I could do. But they deserve some, a really, really large thank you. Because without the staff, I, I was, you know, my job was, I, it would be, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't exist. Wouldn't be able to do it. I would not have lasted as long as I had without the staffing that we have and the, the ability for them to, to do what they do. So again, I appreciate that and I just say that they'll continue, if we continue to provide the things that we have to the employees, that we'll, we'll get, we'll continue to succeed.
I'm sure if you want to keep buying Qdoba, they'd be happy to welcome you in.
I know that that is the case.
But, you know, you had mentioned that you had good positive policies and whatnot from work from home. But I also want to say that I think we have quality employees and that makes a difference that that program actually is successful and is working quite well.
Yep, yeah, 100%. Yeah, the employees are amazing.
The employee makes all the difference in the world. The good work ethic shows through in the end. So, thank you. Mike, did you have anything?
Not today.
Okay. You're gonna save that for later?
Yeah, so, well, thank you again. Again, I appreciate working with, with you all.
Great, thank you. All right, environmental services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one item for the board this morning and that is a final plat application by the Hubbard County HRA EDA. It's up in Farden Township, taking 40 acres and dividing it into seven lots. This was before the board in July for preliminary plat approval. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the final plat to the board and there was no public comment at the final plat. And there was no public comment at the final plat, public hearing. So it seems everything's in order as far as complying with the ordinance and no concerns were expressed along the way from prelim to final. So the recommendation of the Planning Commission would be to approve the final plat.
Okay. Any questions for Eric? Right, is there a motion?
Does Ted will make a motion to accept the, uh, to accept the final, uh, plat?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have. Unless the board has anything for me. Okay. Thank you.
On to Administrator.
And we are gonna hear from Justin and Austin on the project update.
Yeah, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Yeah, so as Jeff alluded to, um, I'll be giving a project update here of what's been going on and also take a look at PR twelve for the Law Enforcement Center additional scope. So starting off with an update, construction update. So construction has been ongoing. Um, at the Government Center Level One, the remaining aluminum glass and framing was completed. And punch list also took place. Contractors will be working on punch list here over, over the next couple of weeks. Um, additions wise at the garage in Sallyport, pre-cast erection was completed. Structural steel erection was completed and the roofing work commenced. Um, the grading on the inside has commenced as well. And the underground plumbing roughens is also commenced. So, so things are progressing well at the garage in Sallyport. And then at the Law Enforcement Center on the east side here, the interior slab upgrade was poured and the exterior cold form metal framing installation has been substantially completed. And as you can see, they have started to install sheeting. So things are progressing well on the east side. Renovations at the LEC Unit C Phase One B, we have, um, commenced on selective demolition in that space. So things are, are starting to progress at the jail units. I do have some pictures. We can take a peek at. So here is at the garage in Sallyport addition, just showing the structural steel joint erection taking place. And then this is showing the decking being installed. Then this is the existing Sallyport, showing the existing slab being removed. And that will be the new pre-booking and booking space. And then this next picture is showing the new roof being installed on top of the garage in Sallyport. And then this is actually inside the garage, showing the new trench drains, uh, being, being poured. The, the base is being poured. And then again, going into the Sallyport, showing the underground plumbing roughens taking place. The framing is at the east side addition, that, the, the LEC addition, showing all of our framing for that new entrance space. So upcoming, uh, we'll be continuing bi-weekly project oversight committee meetings. Continue construction at the Government Center, so we're gonna plan on turn over Phase One A. Um, and then commence Phase One B and One C. So that's the remaining spaces on Level One. That's the corridor and the remaining admin spaces. Continue construction at the additions and as well as the LEC remodel. Overall schedule, so the renovation, uh, scope of work, Level One renovation, still, still tracking, um, June, June twenty-fifth, and actually that, that September day will, will trickle into about the middle of October. Uh, the lobby records and sheriff's office, still tracking to be completed April of twenty-six. Renovation at the housing units and booking, tracking to be completed October of twenty-six. New construction for the garage in Sallyport, still tracking for June twenty-six completion. And then the lobby record sheriff's east side work, still tracking for early next year completion.
So just specifically, I don't know, Austin, if you're gonna talk about that, but, um, we're supposed to get the furniture for the downstairs renovated offices Monday next week. And, uh, we would be moving the, um, attorney's office out of their existing space then later next week. And then hopefully the week of the twentieth, we're starting on, uh, Phase One B and One C. So it's actually gonna push us into November.
Correct. Yep, yep. Yep, and the big thing with that is we added some aluminum framing that was changed via a past PR and the lead time bumped us out to, to about that early November timeline. Doesn't, doesn't really affect overall completion of the project in totality, being that separated from LEC. But nonetheless, that, that portion of Level One did get bumped out a little bit. Uh, so next, wanna dive into proposal request number twelve for the added LEC office finishes. I know that we had brought this up at our last meeting, but just wanna get into more detail regarding this change. Um, so again, just reiterate, this was a, a owner request change. Um, I did attach some drawings, but they're pretty small. So the spaces that this affects is on the east side admin spaces. So Room one-one-one-eight, the printing room, the woman's bathroom and the woman's locker room, the men's bathroom and men's locker room. And then there's an office space, Room one-one-twenty-seven, and then a couple interview rooms. And then Room one-one-twenty-five, the break room, and as well as the sergeant's office. And essentially what this is, is complete demo on the inside. Really not a whole lot of structural demolition, but it's removal of all the existing finishes, um, and, and reinstall new finishes to align and match with the spaces that we're already touching. So new paint, new, new carpet, new fixtures, new ceilings, new lighting, uh, new, new, uh, diffusers and grills in the ceiling spaces. Um, so again, essentially tying all that new, new work that we're already originally outlining to do into one compliment, complimentary space.
So you can see the, the administrative spaces here and the new space here. And these were outside the scope because they didn't have to be done to support the new structure, right? And the more we got into it, the more we looked at walking from, transition from one new flooring to old flooring and, um, new, it, it makes sense to do it now. It's unfortunate it wasn't included at the beginning of the, of the project. But this, like, as Austin said, this will make all the administrative space, um, finishing be the same as the new space and, and the renovated space.
Yep. Yeah, so again, the, the next couple of sheets is showing the, the mechanical works, the new grills, diffusers that are being installed in that space. And the light, the, the last drawing showing the new lighting, electrical work that, that's being done in those spaces as well. So in totality, PR twelve changes, what we are looking at is eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and eleven cents for this scope of work. Um, these next couple attachments, I did present at the last board meeting, but I just wanted to leave it on this presentation, just as more of a for your reference. So again, change orders to date, commitment totals, we've approved a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And out of those a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, a hundred and twelve of those change orders have been driven from owner request items, design oversight, et cetera. And then the next attachment, future added scope, so what we're here today to get approved is that PR twelve for eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and eleven cents. Then in addition to the eighty-eight thousand, we do have, um, added carpet to the second and first level. Again, to make all the existing spaces that were outside the scope complimentary to the, to, to the spaces that we are touching. And then also some added, uh, added locks to the second level casework. So in totality, we're looking at a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, a hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-seven cents in, um, additional scope owner request items that we are looking at coming up. On the overall budget summary, again, this is a spreadsheet that we use. We track every single dollar that gets ran through the project. We have our soft costs, our budget. What I've highlighted in yellow is that separate line item of a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Just tracking that there, showing it there, you know, pending approval from the board this morning. If we do, um, achieve additional dollars, those dollars will be reflected in the overall project balance there, where we show that overage. And it'll actually show an underage of additional dollars that we have to cover the contingency losses, if you will, for, for the project. So in totality, our recommendation to conclude is to recommend adding funding to approve the overall pricing from the multiple contractors in the grand total amount of eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and eleven cents for proposal request number twelve, added LEC office finishes as presented.
And, um, and as I mentioned before, and I will, I can detail this for you next week when I give a budget update. My proposal would be to use twenty-twenty-five capital funds to make whole that, um, contingency fund so that we have, have that contingency fund as we finish the rest of the work going through the jail where we expect that we, we need some contingency funds. I would note right here that when we are showing overall project balance of minus a hundred and thirteen, we're still showing three hundred thousand dollars in contingency, right? And we just need to hold that out for the rest of the project.
Yep.
Um, so, um, the first request is to approve, um, PR twelve and the additional scope in the Law Enforcement Center. The other caveat on that is that, um, Scott and Corey have, um, committed funds that they can use so that when we buy the furniture for that space, they're gonna pay for it. It's not gonna come out of project funds. They're gonna use, um, I think, gun permit and some other, some other funds that they have available to furnish that space. Um, they're kicking in about sixty or seventy thousand dollars, I think, in, in furnishings to finish that space, to make everything the same. And this, this is the time to do it. And we, we have, like I said, we have the, the funds in twenty-twenty-five capital that we can use to make this budget whole and, and add this change. As far as I'm aware, the only other changes that are gonna come up are gonna be construction-related or code-related or something beyond. We don't have any, you don't anticipate any additional user, county request changes at this point.
No, no, yeah, just reiterate what, what Jeff alluded to, you know, we do have three hundred thousand dollars left in contingency. You know, it's a okay amount. It's not as much as we would like. But, uh, but with getting into this renovation aspect of the jail, you know, there's obviously someone, there, there's more risk for unforeseen's. Um, you know, code, code requirement items, when we start to open up some walls that may be required by the bill inspector to, to get done per the state. So again, just to be clear, you know, with, with PR twelve, the added carpets, um, at, uh, additional funding is, is, is gonna be needed to proceed with that scope, if we don't want it to impact our current contingency dollars.
So the first motion would be to, to approve the added scope. The second motion would be to allocate up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from current capital funds to the project. And if they're not used at the end of the project, they'd be returned back to the county. And what happens if we don't approve these funds?
That our recommendation would not, would, would be to not proceed with this additional scope.
Thank you.
Yep.
Several meetings back, we approved additional amounts. And what's the, what's the grand total between this one and that one?
Are you talking with this PR and then the Mendali Plan Review Change Event?
It was, it was the Mendali Plan Review Change for eighty-some thousand dollars that you approved a couple of meetings ago.
Yeah, you know, like an entrance door added and something like that was added down there.
That, that was, those were, those were required by code, um, in the plan review of the project. Really beyond anyone's ability to, to guess, as, um, some of those codes and the enforcement and the application of those codes has changed. So we had to respond to do that. The other things that I think were included in that, was the temporary entrance for the jail included in that? Or was that not included in that?
That was not included.
But those were all simply code issues that were required by the state in order for us to proceed with the project?
I thought you were getting funding for that from the twenty-twenty-five capital improvement already.
That project and these projects, what I'm saying is, is we would need to allocate a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, from twenty-five capital to cover all of those scope changes. The previous ones and these that are here.
Yeah, and this, and this three hundred thousand dollars in contingency does reflect that Mendali Plan Review Change already. And again, just to go back to that PR, you know, that, that was a sizable PR that's very common on a lot of our projects, if not all of them. So we did expect that to be coming. Again, what, what drives that is we don't get the plans submitted to the state until post-bid. And that is to get our billing permit. So a lot of things, you know, the, the, the code's always evolving. You know, the design team tries to catch everything, but it's, it's just impossible to catch everything. And so it's pretty common to have our, probably our most significant change order to be that Mendali Plan Review Changes.
So to be clear, you're, you're asking for us to approve up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, two thousand and twenty-five capital, so that we can leave the contingency fund where it's at temporarily, until we know exactly where we finish? Correct. Right, correct. It, it is, we're gonna allocate that to the contingency fund and anything of that two hundred and fifty that's not spent will become, will come back to the county. Will come back if we don't-
It's possible all two fifty would come back?
Highly unlikely.
Cause we've already spent the eighty-eight thousand we approved.
Well, the, the contingency is shown at three hundred thousand. We're showing an operating deficit of a hundred and thirteen, which means we've got a hundred and eighty-six thousand actually left in contingency.
But we have a long way to go.
And we have a long way to go. So allocating the two hundred and fifty to, to refill that contingency account is, um, and, and I would say doing it in twenty-five makes sense because in twenty-twenty-six, remember, we're allocating over three hundred thousand dollars of current capital to offset the, the boarding costs for, um, law enforcement because of the displacement of the female prisoners during that period of time. So it, it makes sense to do it out of this account. We would actually transfer the money. But then at the end, if there were any, if there were any funds left over in the project, then they would come back to that fund.
Okay. Is there any more discussion?
It would've been nice to be able to fund that through the bonding to begin with.
I a hundred percent agree. I really do. There are, and we've had conversations. Some of the issues that have come up have been, um, I, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna point fingers, but some of it was law enforcement saying, "We don't need to do that." And then the architect not looking, or, I mean, the twenty-three thousand for additional carpeting is really an oversight. And in my opinion, on the architect for looking at saying, "We're gonna do this project, but when we do this project, we really have to finish the, the finishes around it to make it blend and work." And I believe that the, um, the LEC offices is kinda the same thing. Even if, even if in planning, they said, "We don't need to do this," the architect really should've pushed back and said, "It's gonna look dumb if you don't do this," right? So I, I a hundred percent agree. If we'd added a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars to that bonding for this, it wouldn't, we, we really wouldn't have noticed it.
You had good rates.
In our payment? Yeah. Yep.
However, it didn't get added, so.
Yeah, it did.
Here we are.
So you're looking for two separate motions, I'm assuming? You, you could make it as one. I, I think it's cleaner as two. I'll move to approve the, uh, proposed, um, request number twelve.
Is that all your motion? Okay, all right. Dave moves. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Shar seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
And then I'll move to allocate up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of two thousand and twenty-five capital expense to the project.
Do we need to put in a motion to be returned if unused, or?
Could. Yes, I, I appreciate that. To be returned to capital if unused.
All right, Dave moves. Is there a second?
I guess I will.
Shar seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Great. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Austin. Administrator update is that we will have an updated, um, budget papers for you next week. Uh, I also asked, um, Brian and Nancy to- Brian and Nancy to provide a summary of the changes in HHS so you can see specifically how we we achieve that that change in the budget. So Mike can bring that and present that next week. Is there anything else that you want to take a look at? Now or going forward as we uh as we've worked on finalizing the budget and move towards getting to the final approval of budget and levy? We've seen all of, we've seen all the major departments.
I guess the one thing that I want to make. Sure that we hear is is always the with the when Brian and Nancy come, how how is the. How are the position changes going to affect us economically?
Yes, and I and I ask for a summary of that. I will have Michael here for, Michael here and we'll present that.
To see what, you know, if we're going to be missing funds or if we're going to be generating funds through this. It would be nice to have that clearly laid out for us.
Yep. I will do that. I also asked him for what the caseload is, what the average caseload is across the state. And um and then what our reimbursement rates are. That's one of the measures of, that's how we know that working remotely works because our our reimbursement rates continue to be high, the the hours logged by the staff. And the reimbursement we're getting from the hours that they're logging by the staff continues to put us in the proficient range, but I want you to see that. And to see how that places us relative to the state average and other other counties. We have the data on the on on this stuff and um and I think it's a good time to take a look at that.
So what was your, I was reading somewhere, what was your question about if there's anything you want to know right now?
I'm asking if there's anything, any additional budget items that you'd like us to bring forward between now and December when we approve the final budget levy? But next week I will have uh. An updated budget balance to show the preliminary levy request and it'll have the changes from human services in it. We've talked to all of the primary um departments. So I'm just asking if there's any other departments or any other issues you'd like to look at.
I've have one. I know um, you know, with the library, um, they had a request for two seventy one, but we left it at the same as this year, two sixty two. And the reason why I'm in favor of reducing it by the, you know, we had mentioned the four thousand. Well, it's where it's at now is reduced by nine thousand. So if you, so I I can go with that, reducing it their request by four thousand because they overpaid and we overpaid them in twenty twenty four. But we didn't overpay them by the nine thousand. They'll have to make cuts. Um, you know, it would be minor compared to what Bell Trammy has to make. But if you got room to where you can bring that from. Only four thousand down from the two seventy one request, that would be quite helpful. If not, well then. Can go with the two sixty two, six eighty eight, same as this year.
Yeah, I'm, I would have to look at the detail myself. I. Two sixty two was probably the best number we had at the time when we punched in the final number. Did we have the actual twenty twenty six recommended number?
Yeah, you you have her request for two seventy one. I can give it.
I I I'm sure that I have a copy of it, but I, the timing of it, I'm not sure why it got punched in the way it it did, other than. In July, when we're working on this, we punch in the best numbers that we have and oftentimes it's last year's number. Especially on those requests that come from outside of the county department.
If there's room, I'd like to say at least, I can see it reducing by the four thousand because we overpaid that much in twenty twenty four, but.
Okay.
If you can add. Five thousand to that, that would be helpful.
We will review that request. And and. I will put in the request. You guys will discuss how you want to modify that request. If 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 what's in the budget now is not the twenty twenty six request, I will change that line and make adjustments. And um I did not intend to um. Change the requested amount that was put in the budget. And what I'm saying is is if the number was put in there, it was put in there before we had better information.
Alright, anything else? Alright, we will move on to committee reports. David, do you want to start?
Heritage. The end of August, the CMS overall star was four. Health inspection was four, quality measure was three, staffing was four. Minnesota nursing home report card was still at a two. Again, that goes way back and that should be changing pretty quickly going up. Five hires, nine terminations, still have four open FTEs. And we had one agency contract. And I believe we are going to get our uh. Our two nurses that we've been waiting for from from the Philippines. Uh, finally got approved and should be coming in any day now, if not already. Let's see. Heritage Manor Census is at twenty three point two nine out of twenty six. The cottages were at fourteen point six out of eighteen. And the living center was at forty two out of uh. The fifty four beds we have available. EBITDA for all three combined was a positive forty six thousand nine hundred fifty two. The census as of the end of September. The man was twenty three out of twenty six, cottages were fifteen out of eighteen, and the living center had a census of forty two. And we are staffed now to be able to take up to capacity of fifty four, so. So hopefully we'll see some. Census increase at Heritage Living Center over time, probably during the winter. That's that's what I got for Heritage. Remember. At an airport the other day, nothing, nothing really new there. That takes care of it.
Okay, Shar?
Um, I have two, one, one, I had a prime west meeting on Thursday. The joint board voted unanimously to approve the contract for the new CEO, Matt Magnuson, and um. We had a little celebration where the board chair and Matt signed the five year contract. DHS has looked at revising the rates because we're losing so many millions of dollars, which means every other. Insurance company is also losing millions and so um it looks hopeful. That we could possibly. Keep moving forward in a positive manner. We have plenty of money um. At at this point to weather the storm for a while, but long term, we can't keep doing that, so. Um, adjusting the rates is good news. The other meeting I had was a mahabi and um. Actually, it came up, um, the current culture that we live in, we had a discussion about how important it is that words matter. Because there was some misunderstanding even on my part at a presentation and it was. What I thought the presentation was about was because of the words and it turned out to be something entirely different that was just fine. So it was a really good discussion. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, I'll update you. I attended the Highway seventy one corridor. Public meeting, just to, they were just gab, MINDOT was gathering information about the. The proposed work that they would like to do. Um, they're looking for public input. A lot of was some minor things that they were going to try to include into their future plans. But anyway, on their, on MINDOT's website, there should be a uh map coming up shortly that has. The the public comments about what they saw as issues with little bubbles off to the side so that you can read. About the issue that the individual had or or whatever, so it can see if it addressed anything that's on your mind or maybe brings to mind something else. And then uh I went to uh. The MRC yesterday. There are a lot of counties that have pretty significant levy increases. The lowest was three percent is their proposed increase and the highest was over thirteen, so.
Steve, I'm just curious with all the mandated things that have to be. Done at social services, what kind of, did they elaborate what kind of services they're discontinuing to try?
No, no, they did not. They, a lot of them were saying that they're going to go through their laundry list of services or the things that they provide. And anything that was not um. Deemed as vital or necessary, they're going to look at trying to eliminate those things or postpone. The implementation of those till later when things kind of settle down. Now, is that going to be ever settled down? I don't know. It doesn't sound good. As far as MRC goes, there's uh forty eight counties are in MRC, so forty eight out of eighty seven.
Wow.
Is significant.
It was twenty seven or twenty eight when we started.
And there is one other county that is looking at joining, so it may be up to forty nine in the near future.
So that's, that's interesting because. If we can get like to that over fifty number. And maybe MRC's policy will get more traction at AMC because.
Yeah.
You can say, come on now, guys.
Yeah.
May maybe maybe you ought to give us a little more credibility and wait when we do their policies.
Yeah.
Strength in numbers.
And they did talk a little about the comparison of. MRC to, I think it's, what is it called, MICA, where it's the metropolitan counties? So um. It seems like they're kind of going the same direction with some other policy ideas just because of the. The um fallout of all the federal. Changes and the state changes pushing everything down to counties. It's affecting everybody the same, but I mean a. Fourteen million dollar or fourteen uh percent increase for Penopin County is a lot different than a fourteen percent increase for, say, uh. Big Stone, you know.
The one difference I notice though is. The metro counties, the solution is always ask for more money from the state.
But even, well.
Would just like to give us more authority.
Yeah, yesterday I was reading the the MR, the the AMC magazine um and Jeff's had an article in there. And then so did Ramsey County, and then there was another county that had something in there just to compare. Um, and it's interesting when you hear about. You think the metropolitan counties are, oh, you're so well off. But the take I got out of whether what Ramsey County had written was they, you know what, they aren't doing that good. They're struggling too, so I, it's it's a challenge. The one thing I did here at MPC or at MRC yesterday was the MPCA is recommending to the governor. To put a hundred and eighteen million dollars into the budget for construction and demolition landfills. Eighty eight million would be for infrastructure and it usually is a fifty fifty split, but they're proposing a seventy five twenty five, so seventy five would be the state obligation. Ours would be twenty five for any future projects like that. And then they're proposing thirty million dollars for cover systems for uh closing of landfills and that would be a fifty fifty split. And by twenty thirty one. All of the packaging that's designed is supposed to be recyclable or compostable, all packaging, so. That'll be interesting to see, but everything that was said was MPCA's unrealistic um expectations. And there's just no way to implement everything. It it just, it's impossible to do the things they want, so. That was pretty clear. But the the three priorities that came out of it yesterday was uh. The SSIS and technology uh updates for all of the systems that have to deal with human services was a big topic. Solid waste was a huge one and then mental health, trying to do something, more bad capacity everywhere in the state.
So when we were at AMC, you know, they talked about the SSIS. But nothing was said about an actual implementation data when they'll have the work done. Was anything said yesterday?
No, no, there was nothing said about that.
Oh, it'll take years.
Yeah.
I know.
Just to develop the systems, it'll take years.
I mean, you know, they're still identifying all the problems and coming up with.
Yeah.
What they would like it to look like and then you got to develop it.
Yeah.
Take years.
That's all I had. Oh, um, and one thing is there's a new uh community health um coordinator. At the hospital. Um, I don't recall her name right now, but uh. So the the new healthy Hubbard County twenty thirty meetings that were set up haven't been taking place. And I'm hopeful that uh. She can pick up where Marley left off because there's some things on the on the list that did not get accomplished. And opioid settlement money is one of them. There's a timeline on that. And I think we're going to run up against the clock on that, so I want to make sure that. That is followed through on and I did make sure I emailed her about that specific topic, so. That's it.
Let's see, I had a parks board meeting. Some of the stuff is in the paper, uh, like one of the things is the demos right now is probably done. And they didn't uh get, they're the variance requests that they needed. I can update you on what those are if you don't, I don't know them, but. One of them was to continue to use that maintenance shed, which is uh within the hundred feet of the lake. Uh, roadway setback, the main road didn't meet the setbacks and also. That roadway had a slope of greater than twelve percent, so they had to get a variance for that, but those are all approved. And then uh that uh part of the trail up on by seventy one from that tunnel into the park is finished. It goes right by a marker for that uh dead old. What is it, Jefferson Highway, so. Used, nobody can, was able to see it in the past, but now this this path goes right by it, so. That'd be a little stop on your bike. Then I also had a SWCD meeting. Uh, they had a discussion about the addition to their budget for the de Beldane, the twenty thousand that we approved. So they're going to be um facilitating um that. They did approve uh. Insurance company called Shelter Point and they're the ones that are going to do their. Their uh family, paid family leave. Things, I think we're going with MetLife, but they've, I've never heard of the Shelter Point. But that's who they chose and they also went a hundred percent on it. Then uh library meetings, I had a number of those. One was the regular board meeting. Um, but then we also had a policy committee uh meeting. To develop several different policies as a result of some recent employee issues. And we also had a budget committee meeting, or yeah, and uh. The impact, discussed the impact of Bell Trammy's decision to cut their. The library's request by forty two percent. Which is results in a hundred and eighty five thousand dollar difference from what their request was, so. Joe Gould, the one, it was a four one vote. Joe Gould was the one who voted against that cut and he's going to try to go back and uh. Have some figures from uh Melissa, the director, about the the cuts that will be required if they follow through with that that cut. He's he's hopeful that they can increase their funding because uh Bell Trammy has a seven hundred thousand dollar contingency fund. So they've got money from there they can get if they need to, because they've already set the levy just like we have. Yeah, to cut that much, uh, there is a pretty big public uh uproar about that, but. That's what's needed if they want to keep it funded. That's about all I got.
Yeah, you mentioned one thing about the paid family medical even at MRC yesterday. They. They did ask who. Just uh chose to go with the state for that program and only one county out of all the counties that were there. Well, with the state, most people went with MetLife.
I think like ours, uh, the state, point eight eight. I don't know what part that is for. For whatever, but point eight eight is the figure about they charge. I think with MetLife, we got point seven nine.
Correct.
Yeah.
So basically, it's point eight eight of a percent is the is the tax amount.
Okay.
So in addition, take twenty three million dollars worth of um salaries and wages. And point eight eight is the. Is the additional cost to to cover that program. We reduced that to point seven nine, so that was almost one.
We reduced that to point seven-nine, so that was almost one tenth of a percent or one. One tenth of, yeah, one one tenth of one percent.
Alrighty, and I had, uh, let's see, we'll start with the Northwestern Minnesota Juvenile Center. Let's see, when we went over the financial reports, the host county agreement. Um, we did have, uh, we did raise our rates. Um, which is something that we're probably going to be doing pretty much every year, but we had a big jump last year because we were trying to. Make up, uh, as I think I told told you back then, trying to keep employees. That's uh, we got to pay them if you're going to keep them. And then as comparison to other juvenile centers in the state, we're still lower, our rates are still lower. Uh, and we haven't had anybody not come to us because of our rates. Also talked about client movements, uh. We had to update our policy update, but that was basically. Uh, changing the words from juvenile or client to resident. And that was pretty much the only changes that were actually made in the policy. And we talked about needing a van and we talked about the options of buying new or leasing or looking for a used one. Also had the headwaters regional development commission meeting. We had uh, had a new commission member, uh, Marsha Jacobson, she uh, represents higher education. Also kind of went over the headwaters regional finance corporation activities. Um, that's the uh, part of the HRDC that uh. Loans money, uh, mostly gap funding. Uh, talked about the neighborhood connections. And basically what they're doing mostly in in uh, Bemidji with the conifers and at Ridgeway, the apartment complex is there. And they talked about the. The van that they use to transport a lot of these people. At at little to no cost to them so that they can get to their jobs, because a lot of these people that live in these, the Conifer and Ridgeway apartments, uh, don't have vehicles. Uh, let's see, state uh, looked at, probably going to add a green corp member. We've done that here in Hubbard County and that's worked out rather well, so we're encouraged about that. Our update had an audit update which twenty twenty. Twenty twenty-four is almost completed. Let's see. And we talked about the the building, did sustain a little bit of damage during the storm. And we looked out at uh, what needs to be done there and we've gotten some estimates and stuff which is going to be. Approved at our next meeting. Uh, let's see, also had the township or we gathered up at Farring Township. To listen to residents' concerns and stuff. Steve was there and Char was there with me, along of course with with Jeff and Mary Thompson. I think it was went better than prior meetings had gone. I still wish it would have gone a little bit better, um, but I think towards the end, some people were seeing, um. Um, and I think some of the toughest people were actually kind of changing their point of view. Talked about maybe a bike path that could be put in. Uh, I know that there was talk about they'd like to connect to the Paul Bunyan Trail so that they could have a bike path all the way into Bemidji. You know, things like that, so I think it kind of got better, you know, it started off a little bit rough, but like you say, there's a lot of unknown. I think is what mostly the people are are concerned with up there. But overall, I think it went rather well.
And Ted, by the end, I I do think that they were seeing it possibly could be a benefit.
Yeah.
Without a lot of negative impact.
And I think communication seemed to be a big thing.
Yes, because that's why they started out the way they did. They hadn't had the communication. It was available to them, but they hadn't come to the township meetings.
Yeah, yeah. But like I said, it, I knew it wasn't going to, I knew there was going to be some opposition.
Yep.
You know, and I think that I think you still have the the silent majority. That probably thinks it's just fine, you know, talking with the township supervisors on that, they said that they, a lot of people. Have commented that they like this idea that they're we're trying to build the tax base there and appreciate our help. But they're fine with what they're doing, so why come to a meeting about it type of a thing, and so I kind of understand that, but. Still hoping for the best. Uh, let's see, had a Mississippi River Headwaters, One Watershed One Plan. Uh, it was really a non-meeting because we didn't have a quorum. Uh, but we decided to proceed with the meeting because we had uh, some people there that were presenting some stuff. Looking at the agenda, the things that needed approval would have been the agenda, the prior minutes. Uh, the when we have our next meeting. And there was one thing, the advisory board had wanted to change some wording in the. In the in the bylaws, uh, in the rules, and basically it was. In the beginning, we talk about. Uh, the possibility of seventy-five percent, but then when they go back to the final pages, there's a chart. And instead of saying up to seventy-five percent, it says seventy-five percent, so they wanted to add the words up to. But we didn't have a quorum, so, but like I said, it was uh. It was good to see about what had been being done. Possibilities of future funding, uh, we're trying to spend the twenty twenty-two grant, which we were given an extension. In which we've almost paid that down. Spent most of that money. But we don't, we plan, we probably won't spend all of it, then what we don't spend will be returned to the state. And then there was a twenty twenty-three allocation. We're already looking at getting an extension there. So there. We have some projects, but we're not spending all the money that we're getting, which I guess in one respect is a good thing too, but. Uh, if this, if if there's, uh, if there's a need, there's funding definitely available there. For that, um, then I also had a Mississippi Headwaters Board meeting. Um, went over the articles that were in the um, Voyager Minnesota article, some social media posts. Uh, the LCC MR tour that our executive director went on. Uh, we had a couple of variance requests. One of them I mentioned last month that they wanted to approve a lot line change. Uh, but they hadn't gotten there in time for the uh, to meet the deadlines for us to actually act on it. Uh, which was a simple one, uh, the person owned both lots was going to sell both places, both homes with garages and one garage was. Three feet over the property line, so they had to change the property line. Um, then we also had one of variance, uh, there again, it's on non-conforming. Uh, legal non-conforming lots, you know, that were plotted before the. Uh, before the ordinances went into effect. And this was, so basically anytime somebody wants to do something on those lots, they need to get a variance. And this was to add a steel building. Which the their their planning commission and at Beltrami County okayed everything and we didn't find anything. To say no to, um, so we approved that. Uh, let's see. Talked about the upcoming banal conference and what uh, the fellow commissioners on that board, uh, what their. What their responsibilities would be to to do there. And I think that's about it.
Okay, is there anything else? All right, hearing nothing, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll so move.
Oh, sorry. Where are you from? The beside of our grill.
Oh.
Yeah, it was on the consent agenda. It's approved, yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep, sorry. No, that's fine.
That was the same thing right away, and he's when 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 Mike came. He sat through the whole meeting not realizing it was on the consent agenda and so.
So when do you open? Well, I'm going to sign the papers here in just a few minutes.
You'll be open this winter then?
We're hoping, yeah.
Yeah, great, we'll see you.
So so deer camp.
Passing through there a few times, I'm sure.
My deer camp is two miles to the east, so if you could be ready before deer season.
Get some white stuff, I'll come visit you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your patience. All right. Char motion, I did not have a second yet. Dave seconds. All those in favor?
Hi.
opposed, all right, we adjourn.